You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 14th, 2025 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaportcounty dot org.
And I am going to call this meeting to order. Let's stand and recite the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks, everyone. Is that all right?
Squeaking, I know.
Yeah, everybody's boots are squeaking. Okay, um, let's start the way we always do. Joan, could you please do the report?
Sure can. President Dumbrus.
Present.
Vice President Samantha Arnold.
Present.
Ralph Fox.
Present.
Sam Paxton.
Present.
Rich Young.
Here.
Myself, I'm here. Attorney Damski.
Present.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Present.
Fire Chief Mark Swistec.
Present.
Park Board President Jean Caston. Absent.
I think. Suggestion.
Is he a present man? He's absent. Building Commissioner, Code Enforcement Officer Brian Alexander.
Here.
Okay, Flood Planner Minister Ray Dumbrus, he's absent. He never comes. Plan Commission President Isaac Zekel.
Ralph is not able to.
Pardon?
Joe.
Pardon?
Ralph is not able to project people on the meeting up on the board. So if you need to know. I'm online.
Joan, I'm here.
Who's that here?
That's Jean.
Is the TV not working?
It might work, but I wasn't going to hold a meeting to fool around. You guys are okay. You don't need to see Jean, do you?
That's true, though. Okay, so is Jean the only one that's on?
Yes, currently.
Okay. Road Commissioner Bob Sokowski. Website and Technology Samantha, you're already answered. It's all yours.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we must move into the first, oh, actually, Joan, this would be yours. No, it is yours. About the election of the council president.
Of the council?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, let's start with nominations. Do we have any nominations with conflict president?
How will nominate Dinah Deltrich.
I second that motion.
I would agree, but is there anybody else who would like to be president this year?
Well, just a minute, let me finish. Command. Okay, is there, are there any other nominations from the floor?
You can nominate yourselves, too.
Yeah.
Samantha, Ralph.
Okay. Well.
All right, okay.
Let's take a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have five ayes.
Mm-hmm, I guess.
Vice President, you name, I don't do anything without.
Okay, Vice President, I need nominees for the position of Vice President of the Town Council.
I think you can.
I nominate Samantha Arnold. Samantha, how do you feel about it? I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'd love to nominate Ralph, no, I'm fine with that.
Okay, are there any other nominations for Vice President? Anybody else who would be interested? No? Okay, then let's do a call, a vote on this. All in favor of Samantha Arnold as Vice President of the Town Council indicate by saying aye.
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 Who's second?
All the ayes, everybody has approved.
Anybody second, or you just?
Sam did.
Oh, Sam did, yeah. Okay, thank you very much, and we go on. Okay, adopting the meeting agenda, I had sent out an agenda the other day to everyone asking for any kind of suggestions in case we needed to add something. Sam did ask about a resolution for the funds that we were talking about at the end of the year. Joan, in the meantime, has prepared a resolution 2025 dash 01, encumbrance of funds for our, from one year to another. So that is included under resolutions and ordinances, because that was not on earlier. And then later, I think we already had the review of the street paving proposal presented by Global Engineering. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I think I had that on the original one.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the only other addition to the, to the agenda for the Town Council's meeting tonight. Do you have any other suggestions or corrections or additions or anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
Okay, all right.
I second that.
All right, so Ralph moved to approve. Samantha seconded. All right, thank you. Okay, appointments to the, no, oh, I'm sorry, minutes. Let us move on to the minutes of the December 30th, 2024 meeting. Joan sent these minutes out to us last week, and I believe it was over the weekend or last week. And, and, okay, yes.
I didn't hear from anybody about Jean.
No, does anybody have any comments or were there any other corrections? I didn't have anything.
They look good.
Okay, all right. Okay, in that case, I need someone to.
Motion to approve.
To approve, okay. Sam Paxton was to approve. I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ralph Fox, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the minutes are approved, five ayes. Okay, thank you. Reports from committees, officers, clerk treasurer. Okay, thank you.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, I think everybody's received the vouchers.
Yeah, there was only one set of vouchers.
There was, there's two, but one I do not send out because of the payroll.
Okay.
It's confidential.
Okay.
So there's some items to be, so I don't send them out.
Okay.
But we can go through the vouchers, I mailed them or emailed you the vouchers.
Yes, yes, mm-hmm, okay.
Do you have any questions?
No. Does anybody else have any questions about the vouchers Joan had sent to us? No, I don't have anything. If, in that case, then you can read the total sum, Joan, we don't have to go through all of them.
Right.
Okay.
The total sum is $23,406.92.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve those vouchers.
Okay, so Ralph Fox.
Second.
Okay, Sam Paxton seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, five ayes, and these vouchers have been approved.
Okay.
And then you have the second.
The second section is for the payroll taxes that was paid in December. It's paid in January, I'm sorry, for the December payroll taxes in the amount of $2,809.28.
Okay.
That's for all the taxes that are withheld, that's what the town has to pay their portion of it.
Okay, all right.
Social Security.
Any questions? On the payroll taxes? No? If there are no other questions, then I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the payroll taxes.
Okay, Sam Paxton moves to approve. I need a second.
I second.
Oh, Samantha Arnold, okay, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it, and it has been approved by the entire council. All right, we, taxes. All right.
And as far as the delinquent bills, Attorney Damski has all of those.
Okay.
Those need signatures, and this needs your signature.
I did, this has my signature. I did that one already, okay. All right, so I did, oh, I'm sorry, see, I omitted that line from this, I erased it. So we will have to add that again for the next time. So these are the bills, this would be B, okay, the outstanding. All right, thank you very much. Is there anything in particular to report on those? Mr. Nick Brad?
No.
Okay.
Think about six, looks like one A. The P O B O G A already filed the client's audit.
Mm-hmm.
So we can.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Is there two more? With no backing?
This was for the, with January, this is the ones that.
Payroll taxes.
Right here. That's a payroll tax, isn't it?
Right.
Okay, and then that should be the payroll tax as well. And this one is for the long voucher sheet, the one that was sent out, okay? All right, let's move on then to the resolutions and ordinances. Resolution 2025 dash 01, encumbrance of funds from one year to another. Joan sent this out to us, I think this afternoon, because the question came up today that we, what do we do? Because we did not make any kind of resolution or public announcement with regards to these particular, you know, what we wanted to use these funds for.
You did in December meeting.
We did, yes, but I'm saying, but we didn't have a resolution, too.
No, you didn't have a resolution.
Okay, so that's all I'm saying. So it says, whereas the Michiana Shores Town Council has the duty and authority to maintain and allocate funds as necessary from the adopted budget to maintain the fiscal integrity of the town in Michiana Shores and maintain efficiency. And whereas it becomes necessary to encumber funds for the end of the year 2024 for the fiscal integrity of the town of Michiana Shores. Whereas this matter was considered in an open public meeting at which the public were invited to attend and participate. Be it now therefore resolved, as these funds were not previously spent, the Town Council does hereby now encumber $3,630.78 from the ARPA fund for budget year 2025. These funds shall be subject to the same appropriation process as other funds that receive tax money. So remember, this is the appropriation of these funds in the encumbrance, not the decision where it's going. All right, any questions on this? If not, then I need a motion to, to approve this. I don't think we need to do two readings on this kind of a resolution, no.
No, in fact, you could have done it without it.
Well, but now, now we did.
Then it's too hard to find if you can have and look for them.
Right, okay, so I need a motion to approve these, this resolution?
I make a motion to approve the encumbrance resolution 2025 dash 01.
Okay. And I second that motion.
All right, Samantha Arnold, seconds, and in, oops, okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, the ayes have it, and.
Put your name under if you're, we can't read it.
Oh, so you would, okay.
Yes, I would prefer.
Yes, yes.
Who actually signs one, so would SVOA when they do the audit.
Under it or next to it is okay, what do you want?
I would put underneath it if I were you.
Okay. Okay, this is, I'm taking up space, and we might have to.
I think there's enough space underneath there.
Well.
Is there, or no?
Well, there's only five lines, so if I use one for one, I wrote too big, but we have an office paper, so. I only signed one there, so.
Did those come back this morning?
I haven't signed those yet.
Oh, you have, so I just.
I did it backwards.
Whatever, as long as everything's there.
Is that preferable?
Well, I mean, I don't know that we need that sheet, we'll just extend our line. One of them was probably my copy.
Gotcha.
The one I made for over here, yeah, probably was. Okay, I'll just sign this, and we'll be going on with the meeting in just a moment. Okay, Joan, these are ready.
Thank you.
Okay, the next section would be appointments to boards and commissions and the liaison positions. Let's, I'm going to start with liaison positions first, so that we would have those, you know, all set up. I did not list all of them here, but you know, we'll be able to list them, you know, as we go. As liaisons, we have someone liaising with the road commissioner. So that's one person. We've got someone who is the liaison with the park board. All right, we've got another liaison that works with the code enforcement officer, building commissioner.
Are you doing name?
Well, I'm just listing the positions right now, the liaisons, these are just the liaisons. Am I missing anybody else as a liaison?
You have advisory plan and BCA up here.
Oh, okay, these are also for, I meant those, not just the liaisons, too, but that's, you're right, advisory plan commission, actually. Town council members are there, so there are no liaisons, but I think this, I, when I listed these, I listed appointments to the boards and commissions, and then the liaison positions here, I'm drawing another line. So I didn't do a very good plan here, I just used a form I had before. So we have roads, we have park board, we have code enforcement, building commissioner, liaison. I do not think that we have any other liaisons in the past that we have not had.
Someone doing stuff with liaisons.
All right. Okay, there's, there's a liaison for the roads, so with the road commissioners, somebody is generally in charge of being in touch with the road commissioner, the road commissioner went, because it is he, you know, needs something answered or needs to get, you know, a permission for something, they reach out to the, to the road commissioner. I believe that in the past, the road commissioner was Rich Young. Okay, Rich, how do you feel about staying as the, as the road commissioner or the road commissioner liaison?
Fine.
Okay.
I can put up with that now.
All right, so Rose, this is going to be Rich Young. Okay, all right, we, as the commissioner for the park board. Samantha, you were doing that in the past, would you like to stay on that?
I'll stay, I'll stay.
Okay, Samantha, Arnold will stay on with the park board. All right, and code enforcement building commissioner was Sam Paxton in the past. Sam, are you willing to stay on with that? Okay, so that will be Sam Paxton. Okay, thank you very much for handling those things. Now, I, there are going to be some appointments to the boards and commissions in the town. I don't have everybody listed. I did reach out to the BCA president to find out about anybody that might need to be replaced on the BCA. There was one person who stayed, I was not sure about, the others I knew. So I asked Matt to give me an answer on that, and, you know, but he did not get back to me for this. Also, I had asked, oh, no, he didn't ask Matt, but the advisory plan commission right now, we have, I did make myself some notes. Those notes I have better than I had for the BCA, but we'll get the BCA squared away as well. Where's my list here? We don't have another note somewhere in here, okay. We will have two people who will need to be, they were town appointees, and that is Matt Bowen, his term expired 12/31/24. And then Andrew Perdikini's term actually expires 12/31/24, because Andrew took over for a previous month. So hopefully, I have not reached out yet to Andrew. I have reached out to Matt, but as I say, Matt must have been busy, because he didn't get back to me, you know, on, on his, as to whether he will stay on. Matt is also the representative from the BCA, from the plan commission that goes to the BCA, because the BCA cannot have a town council member, you know, participating on it, so it has to be somebody who is a citizen member of the, of the plan commission.
And currently, that's Matt's role.
And that's currently Matt's role, because Matt not only was, you know, appointed by the town council to the plan commission, then the plan commission in turn, you know, sent him to the BCA to be the representative there. So we'll wait on those, and we'll find, we can fill those up in next, next month, that's not, not a problem, we'll get those squared away. So advisory plan, BCA, now Ray has indicated that he would like to retire from the floodplain administrator. I keep asking him to stay in until we actually have somebody on board. So we, you know, the floodplain administrator is always good to have somebody who has maybe more of a vested interest in what's taking place in, with regards to in the town and the building and zoning. So often in the past, it has been a member of the advisory plan commission that has come in. It often fell by default, in the past, it used to even fall to the president of the plan commission to do that. I don't want to throw that on anyone, I know, for instance, certainly not Isaac. For what, plan?
No. The floodplain.
Floodplain doesn't do any kind of meetings. The floodplain administrator is an advisor to the plan commission. Now, there are things that have to be done as a floodplain administrator with regards to classes that have to be attended, they're done by Zoom, you don't have to go in person. So there are webinars and so forth to make sure that you're following what's going on with the plan commission, in other words, floodplain administrator is up to date on any kind of changes or requirements that are being put in place by FEMA and/or the DNR. Okay, so, so you have to follow, you know, those kind of things. And, and the classes are required that you would, you know, attend them, and they do a little quiz when, you know, at the, when it takes place, so.
Well, it's also a role, because Ray has adjudicated issues that have popped up when people are doing things in the floodplain they're not supposed to be doing, and he's very on top of all the rules.
Yes.
So he's helped me out a number of times, just to clarify what it means if somebody is up to this.
Yeah, so he's still, he's still on it, but you know, he says he would like to pass it along to somebody else, you know, to work on.
Might be interested to let you know.
All right, well, that's very good, that sounds good. Okay, so that's, you know, one position. Now, park board, Jean, you, can you hear me?
She muted it?
I'm good.
She's got her phone muted.
Yeah, it's fine.
Hi, Jean, can you let us know whether any of your park board members, we need to get either reappointed or new people added to the park board?
Yes.
Yes, so do you need anybody appointed?
I don't know, I'm going to have to look at everyone's term again.
Okay, all right, so plan on getting that taken, organized, so that we can make any kind of appointments that we need to make next month?
Definitely.
All right, great, thank you. All right, and road commissioner Bob Sokowski, will you agree to stay on as our road commissioner? All right, great, thank you very much, all right. How do you guys feel about that? I see, I'm saying great, because, you know, I'm just appointing everyone.
Don't wait, I don't want Bob to do it.
I want him to remember that's a hill on Paul Cave, and that's really nice.
Okay, well, he took care of it. I even got the picture, it's all done.
I don't think he's got enough salt to do it, I'll give him that excuse.
All right.
Maybe he can find some.
Okay, I actually like the sand that was put down in front of our house last week, that was really great, I don't know who put that down. Okay, was that you, Bob, with the sand? I don't know what kind of.
I'm not using the same.
The county? Because it was a big white truck that came by, and I couldn't tell what it said on it, I didn't have my glasses on, you know, and I was like, who is this with this white truck, you know, dropping? And at first, I couldn't tell what they were doing, because they were going up and down the hill.
I didn't tell you.
Pardon?
We have a new truck.
It's big and white, huh? All right, thank you very much, all right, thanks, Bob, very much. All right, departmental reports. Police Chief Swistec.
Good evening, Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
The Long Beach Police Department responded to 335 calls to suicide in the month of December, when compared to 201 in previous years for the increase of 134 calls. During the month, 19 incident reports were documented, total of nine individuals were arrested, five misdemeanor arrests for operating a motor vehicle on a suspended driver's license, two more arrests, one misdemeanor arrest for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated, and one misdemeanor arrest for possession of marijuana. I've been asked often with all the dispensaries that are now in the Michigan, the Buffalo area, have we been encountering more marijuana on our traffic stops? And the answer is yes, along Highway 12, most definitely we have, and we've been dealing with that on a case-by-case basis. Sunday, January 26th, I just want to get information out to everybody, we're hosting a blood drive along with the internal order of police, US 20, at the Hope Creek Lodge. The American Red Cross here locally is in dire need of blood, so if anybody could join us to support that blood drive from 8:00 to 2:00 p.m. on Sunday, January 26th, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Also, in December, specific to the town of Michiana Shores, on December 9th, Sergeant Mitchell Sykes responded to the 400 block of Piney Drive in reference to a fraud report in reference to a credit card. The caller stated that someone opened a credit card in their name, attempted to close their bank account, and the caller stated that the bank was also investigating further, we'll follow up on that case.
Oh, interesting.
So that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody have questions, Sheriff Police Chief? No? Okay, thank you. Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
From the month of December, we spent 122.34 hours, the holiday bubble on tour meeting nights, so we have meetings, so a very short month for us. During the month, we had seven calls, none of them were in Michiana Shores. Last year, we had 164 calls, it's the most we've ever had, surprisingly, after the COVID and stuff. We beat the record by three calls, basically. Also, I would like to report on Lucas Pool. We have, we do have the funds, we have ordered it, it should be here probably three to four weeks, so hopefully by the next meeting, we won't have it. Just depends on Striker, that's who makes the unit. So we want to thank everybody for the donations that we could have, also the town for their nice donation to it. We're able to order pads, because we have a bunch of pads that are expired for our AEDs. Also, I'll be attending a meeting, February 4th, LaPorte County Health Foundation. They are implementing a HeartSafe LaPorte County, and I will use more information on that. But basically what it is, it's, they're trying to, 15,000 people that have AEDs, learn how to do CPR. It's basically, you're just doing CPR, you're not doing anything breathing or anything else, but then we could get alerted also along with other people that are close to where it's stationed at, that they can grab the AED and respond quick. You know, like if it's, say, a house, one is at house, a guy's outside or whatever, they'll know where to get them. So I will find out more information about that, and then I'll respond back to you next month.
Thank you, awesome. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, building commissioner, code enforcement officer Brian.
For last month, there were five billing permits lifted on, in terms of SDRs, we had five pending and three were completed, and I have the information here, if you could just pass these down.
Five, for SDRs, there were five requested?
There's five.
Renewals?
In process.
Are they new ones, or that's the renewals?
No, they're the renewals.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
So there's now new SDRs that have started the process. Not at the moment.
So three completed, four in process, got it.
So Brian, do you have the master list of the short-term numbers of being in charge of that now? Yeah, I have the master list, that's ours. So not right away, but maybe at the next meeting, if you could bring us an updated copy of that. To kind of show where we're at.
So for the five, of the five renewals, you've got three walkthrough scheduled for the other two, it just means you're still trying to schedule stuff?
Yes.
Cool. Okay.
Just quickly, you're one in the bottom for looking at the ball and running with it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's good. What we're looking forward to fill up the role, and we appreciate your emphasis. My only, my only question is that the ones that are at the BCA right now, they were, are in process, and so I have to clarify that a little bit. That's good.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Great, okay. Jean, do you have anything, any news for the park board?
I do. We unfortunately lost the Leaning Tower of Pines in Cape Park in the last windstorm. Clarence, Kevin Chung confirmed that the plaque in the gazebo was spared damage. Skip Moffler was the first person to remediate damage by cutting off branches on a new fence. Mick Wolf quickly came in and cut up the tree and removed it. Secondly, the caretakers of the garden at El Portal, at the El Portal Trailhead, Jim and Chris Kivens, were very concerned, as were all of us, with all the debris left by NIPSCO. NIPSCO had taken down a sizable tree and left everything there. I spoke with the clerk treasurer and the town council president, and we agreed to get Nick Wolf out there to clean that up, so that's really about it.
Okay, any questions of Jean? Any other things? Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have a copy of the?
Of what?
Of her report.
Okay, no, Jean, can you please send a written copy of the report to Joan, and then copy us on that?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Uh, Road Commissioner Bob Silkowski.
Not much for December, the new, uh, air compressor figure. I think we only saw that at one time in December. Probably went up to this one. Did you wanna bring up the grant under my report?
Uh, the, you mean the Community Crossings Grant? Well, we've got it included under ten, unfinished business, so we can address that then. Okay, all right, um, let's see. Advisory Plan Commission would be Isaac, but he's not here today. Um, Ralph, would you or Sam like to say something from the Plan Commission?
Uh, okay, we approved, uh, two things, I believe. Uh, one was a garage on, uh, four-twenty Greenwald. And the other one, Brian, help me, what was that?
Shed, the shed?
The shed at-
Two-ten Grohlman.
Two-ten Grohlman.
Okay.
That was it?
All right, okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, B C A has no report for us. I will ask, um, Matt, I think that they were supposed to be having a meeting now on the, where they had a meeting, no, they're supposed to have a meeting now.
This Thursday.
This Thursday or next Thursday, the twenty-third, I think, right? I think it's the twenty-third. They're doing it the twenty-third. So, okay, so we're gonna, hopefully we'll get some information next month on what's going on with them. White Ditch Drainage Board, um, I was at the Drainage Board meeting this morning. Um, of course, they're gonna go ahead with, uh, the work. They, you know, had collected a couple of bids actually on, on, um, work to be done here in Michiana Shores. They're gonna be working on the three sections. Michigan line to Polkagen, Polkagen to El Portal, and then El Portal to Oakdale. Uh, what is going to be taking place going forward is that they are going to be contacting all the property owners, homeowners along that area, because there are some, uh, that have either trees or even structures and stuff like this. They may have to be dealt with with regards to the work that's gonna be taking place. So any, at any time that the Drainage Board does something where there are a lot of these, the owners are informed, you know, that work will take place. But the expectation is that all of this will only take place in the fall, not now, correct?
Fall slash early winter.
Fall slash early winter. So we're talking about twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-sixth kind of, kind of, you know, thing going forward. Um, and there's gonna be, it's gonna be, I guess, uh, considered a considerable job, you know, to do it all. So, um, they will be handling, you know, all of that, you know, as we move forward.
Yeah, the winning, winning bid on that was fifty thousand dollars, and it was almost, their bid was twenty-five thousand per section, but fifty if they got all three.
Yeah.
The other bid totaled in excess of sixty-five thousand.
No, and totals a hundred, six, a hundred and five, a hundred and five thousand, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
The last time, it was done like eight years ago, about thirty-six thousand.
Right, pardon?
Can you give us any sense of where the excavating is gonna be?
No, we had, don't have the exact detail about that. I will be in touch with, um, John Smith, who is the, um, secretary at, you know, at the, at the Drainage Board to get, you know, like maybe visuals of exactly where they're planning. Oh, they do, pardon?
They have to have some, right?
Oh, John South, I'm sorry, John South, not Smith, John South, my, my fault. So John South at the Drainage Board. Um, I will reach out to him to find out. I know that they were looking at photos and pictures up there at the front desk, um, as they were, you know, they were passing that along, but, so I was not able to see that.
Right, and ultimately what the board sent John back to do is to go back from the records from the last time this was done. So they're not, I think we used the term game, but we're basically looking at what was done previously and following pattern there. And Christine Powell, who was the, was in John's role back then, she was an excellent record keeper, so I don't doubt that he will find it, you know.
Yeah, and that means, you know, dealing with, you know, the letters and things like this and, and as a matter of fact, even photos and things like that that were done at that time.
They'll need to send notices out to all the property owners, so we've been ready over the time for it.
Right, now, I could attest to the fact that they dumped on our property. And, and I say the word dumped is because that's exactly what it looked like. It was dumped. And it was also dumped on the Nemo Keihe property, which is thirty-nine-hundred Brookside. So, you know, just big piles of debris that were left. I know that. I, I'm not quite sure if there was any debris left in any other areas, cause I know we were still, the town was still responsible for that section between El Portal and Oakdale. So, so I'm talking, and I know that they worked in these two areas, and I know they did a lot of work around the Polkagen Culvert. And not, I don't know how much, you know, further, you know, or if anything else was placed anywhere else, so.
So from your experience, they dug out the silt?
Yes.
Right in front of your property?
Pretty much.
Put it on the scoop?
Yep, all along our-
So, all up and down, that's what's to be expected?
That's, that's what I assume is going to happen. I will-
Have any, like, hey, where would you like us to deposit this?
The, okay, this is the interesting part. At last month's meeting, as the meeting was ending, um, I was asked to just present a list of, um, lots that may be available for us here in town, so they wouldn't have to transport it. But then at today's meeting, and I don't know when they decided it, because it was just announced, and there was no discussion at the meeting. So I, I may try to address that, you know, part anyway, you know, going forward. Uh, but it was announced that they will not, uh, that the Drainage Board would not cover the removal of the silt. And that that would depend on the property owners if they wanted it removed. Now, that I'd never heard of in the past. That was never given.
Dig it up, dump it on the property, on his property, and leave it up to the property owner to move it?
That's pretty much what, what the, what the, uh, what the conversation said today. Now, you know, another thing that is of concern to me is, uh, that we, they also discussed the, because they're gonna be cleaning in the area of our first part of the nature path, and that they're also gonna be placing silt on something they called some kind of a ledge. So now I'm not even quite sure which part they're considering the ledge, if they're considering it's part of the, the bank that was, you know, specifically formed now to prevent any of the silt from going down in. And it does, because there's grass growing on it, so I don't know where they're gonna place it. Whether they're gonna, and it sounds like they're talking about placing it on the-
North side.
On the, on our south side, not the north side, although the north side would be better, you know, for us if it was put up on the north side. But I think that we have to do some discussion on that as we go forward, you know, with this.
Or the-
Hey, like the ledge would be where we have the path?
Well, either the path or just pass the path, you know, cause we said, you know, this is, okay, so this was a very interesting meeting, you know, I have to tell you with regards to that today. Um, one of our, uh, towns, he's no longer a resident in town, although he does own properties in town. Uh, Ken Purse was present at the, you know, meeting, and then he spoke up quite a lot, uh, while he was at this meeting. So one of the things he said, and I will turn to Joan to get a little more information on this, is that the original intent of that path along the Drainage Board, the Drainage ditch was, or White Ditch, was not for the walking path, but so that the Drainage Board would have ease of access to the ditch.
That's not true.
Yeah, I don't know that he said that was the original intent. I think he said that was part of the intent.
Well, I don't know, well.
No, but-
Yeah.
It was declared a walking path, and that we even had to just decide, they let us know even what type of material we could use for it, and I don't think you'd want them to cover that up.
They certainly don't. Oh, no, absolutely not. Absolutely not. So these are, and I raised that.
Silt up there is a dumb idea.
Yeah, so anyway.
More information is-
Oh, yeah, so I mean, I, um, Mr. Purse had spoken through it, and then when it was, you know, a time for me to be able to speak, I also, you know, spoke out about it, so. So those are things of concern, and I said, that's a good thing that this is taking place into the next fall. Huh?
When is the next meeting?
Uh, the meetings take place on every first, second Tuesday, same as the town council meetings. At eight-thirty, eight-thirty in the morning.
Eight-thirty, where at?
Yeah, LaPorte County.
And they left it with the idea that since the project is so far out, they do want communication.
That's what I'm wondering. I wanna put it in the newsletter and-
Be right in the middle since I'm here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there, um, is there, I can look on their website, but does LaPorte County website have any information about the Drainage Board on it, do you know?
It has some, but there's not a lot.
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
But they're public meetings, right?
Yeah, they are.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And they're, they're on, they're on video.
They're on what?
They're on video.
Yeah, so you can always, you know, take, take a look at that, too. So that's the report from, um, from the Drainage Board today.
Cause I, okay, go ahead, I mean, if you're- Um, no, this is really good to know, and I would think that homeowners wanna know what's coming up, so they can, um, I think, based on your, you had that meeting today, um, and would, would it be fair to say that one of the concerns of, it's un, unknown how they're, one of the work they're gonna be doing is removing silt. Previously, they put it on property owners' land, and right now it's unclear what, what's gonna happen this year, or we can say that.
Well-
I don't wanna alarm people unnecessarily, but I want people to be aware.
The most that came out of the meeting is that it actually, across the state line, Barren County, they addressed their issue too, because if they clear out that section of the White Ditch, a lot of this would flow through, right? So even the idea of excavating it, having someplace to put it, could be remediated.
If they clear out theirs?
Yeah, but that, you know-
Apparently, I guess there hasn't been a lot of cooperation there.
No, no, Barren County, except that I did announce there that, you know, I had been contacted by, uh, Michigan, the Village of Michiana, a couple of people from Michi, Village of Michiana, and they were interested in, um, in the, um, uh, actually improving their, the size of their stitches so that it would look like our nature paths. So they were asking those kind of questions. I had, um, approached, I think it was Michael Minnis, someone was the president at the village at one time. Minser Minnis, I, I can't remember the name.
Minns?
Minns.
Can you look it up in the village?
Yes, oh, yeah, I know he is. He's not, I've been, but I'm saying in the past, I had asked him about, uh, about them cleaning out, you know, their portion. And he says, we have other kind of things to do. We don't care what it is, what's in there, you know, is his, basically his answer. But of course, you know, they've got somebody else in now, and, um, I have personally never approached them about cleaning it out, and all I know is these are people who are interested in, in making a path. So, but if we could get some of their residents interested to maybe push, you know, their council, maybe something may come of that. So they did not specifically, what they said is they will not remove the silt. Um, so they did not say exactly where it's going to be placed, on whose property and, and that. But they are going to be sending letters to all concerned citizens well in advance of this taking place, so that anybody would be prepared and know. So for instance, in the past, when the last one was done, and you're saying it's like about eight years ago, I think, eight or nine years ago, um, we actually dug up a big, a pine tree, and we dug up a, a birch, thankfully both of them recovered. Well, we put them back in, and then we put them back in, you know, so that their vehicles come through, cause they came through off of, um, Polkagen onto our property, and they, you know, went, you know, to work on the ditch, to even move part of this, um, it's sort of kinda like a fence, you know, basically it's a divider between the two properties. That was, you know, that's all it is, basically, cause anybody can go in and on it, whatever you wanna do with it. But, um, but we did move that away from the ditch, so it wouldn't be in their way. Uh, and I know that the, for instance, the home at thirty-nine-hundred Brookside, they put in a lot of nice plantings. And when I, you know, mentioned this, that, you know, that this may be coming up right now, they said they were aware of the fact that the, of the, you know, the setbacks for the, um, or the right-of-way that the Drainage Board has, you know, and on the properties of anybody, anybody who owns property on, on White Ditch. So they, um, are, you know, they understand too, and they'll just give us a heads up, so that they could take their plans up to whatever they may need to do. But that's only two of us that I know about. I don't know about the other homes. So they said they're gonna check all the records that were left over from Christine, all the letters that were sent out, and how the things were described, and that they're going to be notifying everybody.
Right, and even though it sounds like the project's far out, and they're gonna do that verification, getting word out from the town at this point, it's still not a bad idea. Cause, yes, fall of twenty-twenty-five sounds like a long way away, but as you guys know, with boards, these are slow-moving machines that need once a month, right? And that's, so that's eight meetings, or maybe seven meetings before someone decides they're having it.
So, all right, so that's, that's for that. Samantha, anything on the website? Or any other technology, please?
No, um, website still has lots of traffic. A little more than last year, we have like, you know, around five hundred people actually come to the website in a month's time. Um, look at a thousand pages, which could be not surprising, people are looking for information, so. Um, and, you know, as we always check the most popular pages of the month, um, besides the homepage. Even though it's winter time, the garlic mustard plant's holding on to its lead. Um, as well as the Contact Us newsletter signup page has been busy, and the town council page, people will look at the town council.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and events, so, but yeah, that, those events are usually up there, but yeah. Even in the winter time, people are, so they wanna read about.
Okay, um, how are we, besides the website, how about the technology? How are we going on the?
Um, we've got one, we've got, so, uh, there's, I've been back and forth, and I did not get it done this month, but there's back and forth with the one last step, hopefully to get the dot, di, I M dot gov, and then we can talk about, um, uh, as, as a unified office suite email address, which is for everybody.
Okay.
Um, and then secondarily, I think might come up in new business or not, or not setting prior to twenty-twenty-five. I don't remember about, um, uh, recodification.
Okay.
And online ordinances.
All right, okay, all right, thank you on that. Um, okay, N R P C, um, uh, what I can report is that from last month, that N R P C passed the budget for this coming year, um, and, uh, and the appointment of the, um, you know, the board, the director, you know, took place then. Uh, there's another meeting taking place this Thursday, and it's a full commission meeting. I'll be there. I try to be at all of their meetings, not just the full commission. But I will be at this meeting on Thursday, and I will report back next month with anything new that's going on with N R P C. Uh, and by the way, N R P C does have various different boards, and one of them happens to be, you know, the, you know, one of the environmental groups, and they have a, uh, biking and paddling kind of a group. So if anybody's ever interested in seeing, you know, cause they're very much, this is a group that supported the development of all of these bike paths that have come through, but they're also working on waterways to be able to, to travel as well. So they've got, it's called pedaling, paddling, and, and cycling or something like this. So that, those meetings take place, and you could find that by looking at n r p c dot org to, you know, get any info. Uh, N I R P C. Okay, um, that's it on my N R P C, unfinished business. Review of Street Paving Proposal Presented by Global Engineering. Now, uh, the little, and when you heard it ring, it was Shem Khalil, so, you know, we may be able to get any info from him. I'm just gonna text him quickly. Uh, if we have a question, we might be able to ask him something like right now. You know, if, if there's something general that we wanted to know, or, or make a statement about, or something like this. So everyone got a copy, I don't know, well, Rich may not have a copy of it, you know, um, Joan, unless you, did you give it one?
All of you, because she asked me to give everyone a copy.
Okay, oh, that's the one that, where she saw you the other day, right?
Right.
She stopped by, okay?
Right, and we discussed this Michiana Drive, which is-
Yes.
Well, I, you know, I've reviewed everything, and there's, I have a lot of questions, so I propose that we schedule a separate meeting in the next few days.
Yes.
Do it on Zoom.
Yes.
And get Global on call.
Yes.
I'm, I'm like Joan, I've got a bunch of very specific questions.
Tell me that one more. Okay, one more, sorry, yeah.
Um, but now's not the place.
No, no, this is too much discussing, yeah, and there were some questions, and I think that Jeanette had stopped here. She's an engineer that's working with Shem, and had stopped here and, and, you know, gave some information with regards to the, um, the roads, uh, saying that like anything on Grand Beach, of course, Old Grand Beach Road is being handled by the county. Uh, but they did make some kind of a comment about that the stretch of road here on Michiana Dr., and not Michiana Drive, El Portal, uh, that borders between our town and Michigan City are very, is our responsibility. So I don't know if that's always been the case, or if Michigan City actually has to, or whether we go back and forth on that, I don't know. How that's been handled in the past, I really don't remember. Cause I don't remember, you know, new paving taking place, and who did it.
Yeah, I think Michigan City did their part, and we did the other.
The other half, yeah, and, cause she's-
Not half, but the part that goes up to the pizza place.
Okay, so Michigan-
That's where the, yeah.
Okay, so Michigan City would have done that, and then we kept going on with the rest, cause the rest of it is ours. How, what happens on a street like Meadow? Because Meadow is the dividing line between Michigan City and Michiana Shores. The street where the pizza place is.
I think on that side of the street is over. It would be me.
That Meadow is all Michiana's, is all Michiana Shores?
No, half and a third.
Well, yeah, cause they've got the water pipes running under there on that side, other half. Yeah?
One half.
Same with Michigan Shores.
Okay, half and half, okay, all right.
But not the whole thing either.
That's what I'm gonna say, what part of Meadow are you talking about?
Well, Meadow, Meadow goes from El Portal all the way to the, I mean, where our, it ends by our, what is it, by Brookside?
So, these are very detailed discussions.
Yes.
And I think a separate meeting to concentrate on this is the better.
Yes, so anyway, so that, that's what makes a very good suggestion, so, um, we'll get back to, you know, Shem, and now we'll have to find out what is a good date.
So, let's pick a time for the meeting.
Okay.
I'm pretty open the next few days. I'd like to-
I'm open as well, except Thursday morning, N R P C meeting.
I know, um, some of you are pretty busy.
Samantha, maybe you can ju, give a couple of dates.
I'm not, um, no, Friday would normally be good, but I have a funeral to go to. Um, evenings-
You're talking about the evening?
Thursday or Friday evening would work.
Thursday evening's not good for me.
Not good for you?
Friday evening then? Early Sunday?
What day is that?
The seventeenth.
What's the earliest you could do it, Samantha?
Um, would you be a Zoom?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, if it's via Zoom, I could, maybe do like- Okay, um, if it's via Zoom, I could maybe do like six-thirty? What, earlier than that?
What about Wednesday?
Wednesday?
Meeting tomorrow?
No.
Okay, well, we'd have to announce the meeting. We have to do public notice, forty-eight hours. So Friday's the first day that we could possibly do it. No, Thursday, we could do Thursday, I think, so we'll push it. Yeah, we push it, yeah, so Friday.
Friday at six-thirty.
Okay, are you available? Friday, six-thirty, okay, Friday, now, pardon?
Yeah.
Come on over, I'll be working at that.
Okay, do some research.
Yeah, um, if Monday, if Friday, because we're gonna be asking Shem or Jeanette to join us, if by some chance they can't do that on Friday, because we need their input, uh, give us a second, you know, suggestion from you Samantha, okay? And then we'll see if Sam and...
Okay, hold on. Monday, um, right now, Monday afternoon, technically I'm, it's a holiday, so I might have some time.
Oh, okay, well, that's right, okay, earliest is Friday evening at six-thirty, right? That's for Friday, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sending this off to Shem, okay?
Wait, is it twenty?
Yeah.
I'll be watching Fox News right there.
Big football game too.
Yeah.
Oh, what time's that game?
Probably...
On Monday?
I hope it's not in the afternoon.
No, it'll be evening.
Evening, okay.
It's seven-thirty.
Okay.
So we could...
We could do it after Monday.
We could do it Monday afternoon.
Yeah, okay, uh, so we're thinking, earliest is Friday evening at six-thirty, can I just suggest that to him first?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, otherwise, Monday, when?
You wanna do like a two or three?
Anytime that's good for you, you know, I'm, I'm good, whatever.
Steve, you don't make any prescriptions.
No, not for this, no, 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 no. We've already agreed inside a contract with them, so.
Let's do a, um, I don't know, what do you guys?
I would just ask them, otherwise, what time, you want me to ask them what time on Monday?
No.
Shem?
Two o'clock.
Pardon?
Two o'clock.
Two P M., okay? All right, we'll see what it says, okay? All right, um, so we know we're gonna have the meeting, I'll let you know as soon as you respond. So let's move on with the rest of our meeting. Uh, so it is new business setting priority goals for twenty-twenty-five. Obviously, you don't have to come up with all your ideas right now, but maybe you do have some things and you've been wondering what we, you know, to plan for this coming year.
Well, I'm gonna keep codification on the list.
Okay, sounds good.
I know there'll be some money involved, but, um, it's just, it's difficult for everybody.
Yeah, it is, it is.
At least for the rules.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They're not all in one place and that's constantly an issue.
Right, I mean, I was even thinking about it today with the resolution, you know, saying like, you know, when, sometimes we would get some information, sometimes we don't get the final one, so then you wonder, okay, do we have everything or don't we, you know, I mean, ourselves now, as we call it, so you're absolutely right, codification would be excellent. Um, uh, anything else?
I think, uh, from a code enforcement perspective, I think we continue to try to focus attention on existing nuisance, uh, complaints that we've leveled and pursue those to closure and identify others.
Okay.
But, uh, need assistance or...
Okay, okay.
And also, um, as it relates to, uh, trees and where we're going with, uh, dangerous trees, both on our own properties that town owns and then also on private property within easements, continue to try to get clarity on responsibility and path of action to cure.
Mm-hmm.
And then finally, um, while we haven't had a, a serious drought, uh, in many years, um, I think it was probably as dry as it could be as we've been this past summer, um, what we're seeing out in Los Angeles and clearly we don't have, uh, the scale and winds that we have to deal with or anything like that, but we do have an awful lot of fallen debris on town-owned properties and throughout the land, throughout the town.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe I would ask Gary and the fire department to kinda come up with a somewhat of a risk assessment, uh, based on worst-case scenario that, that we go through a whole summer without rain and what happens if we have a, a fire that started, is the town prepared for that and, and what can we do to remediate it? I mean, I don't, I don't see it as a imminent, you know, problem, but crazier things have happened, right?
Yeah.
It's our, our, at least, and assess the risk of what we have and what we, what can be done to mitigate it.
Yeah, I know, I mean, look at El Portal, I mean, there's a ton of that maple stuff that has come down there and it's just piled up right there. And, uh, NIPs goes coming through in the spring, ain't gonna cut some more back. And, I mean, I had one tree that was rendered safe supposedly, but they say they will just drop the stuff right there and leave it, they won't clean it up. So, and they're gonna be coming through again, I know that this, this spring, I believe.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But there is a lot of debris out there and it's getting worse, because, I mean, if you look at that one lot there on Brookside and El Portal, all those trees have all gone over there.
Yeah.
And I, I think, you know, the scale of what we, what we have is just on town-owned property is such that it would break our budget, I think, if we had, had to hire it out, so, um, be curious if there are any type of state grants or any type, anything that's out there to help towns make with this type of issue.
Well, you know, and not, not just that, but, you know, maybe what we could do is, you know, contract with somebody who's looking for firewood, you know, or find people, you know, literally that it's available, but you gotta pull it out and take it with you. You know, I don't know how easy and how legal and whatever, um, you know, what would happen with regards to doing something like that, but I know that was once brought up as well in finding someone who was interested in take, picking the wood, so that, you know, we don't benefit from it, our benefit would be to get rid of it, you know, and somebody else can benefit from the taking out. So, anyway, that might be, you know, something we might be able to do too. Okay, Rich, any ideas from you? Yeah?
Just the usual, you know, to echo what Sam said, but just from the aesthetic, uh, you have...
Yeah.
You drive around in the winter time, the town looks like half the trees are...
Yeah, I know, you're right, it's like, you know, if it's green, you can't see them, because there's enough shrubs to cover them, but, yeah, in the winter, yes, we can see everything. Okay, um, the only thing I would add is that I know, I talked about it before and have not moved forward on it, but I'm gonna move forward on it now, is to see if we could set up a staggered schedule of town council elections, so that we don't have to change a board of five people every five years, so that we could have something set up with two and three and that we replace only part of the council, which, you know, alleviates, uh, trying to put five together and also, you know, allows new people to come in with new ideas and then have others there that can, you know, get them acquainted with what's been taking place, you know, what's worked, what hasn't and so forth. So I'm gonna, that will be my big project for this year, to work on that. So, okay, so that'll be, that's my thought. Um, okay, staggered terms. Um, okay, so, um, Brett, is there anything, uh, you've got for us or?
Uh, just a quick update as far as what we can talk about in public meetings, um, Joan gave you the updates on the collections, I mentioned that earlier, we do have some that those will now be judgments against the properties. So the judgment's good for ten years, renewable for an additional ten years, whether you guys want me to take additional collections, you're just having a judgment attached to the property, we can discuss that.
Okay.